Rock Ridge School Board to order. Binder labeled public copy of board materials. Taking board materials is available for public review at the table entering the room. Meeting agendas are also available at that table. Public also access board agendas by visiting rockridgepublicschools.org under board book. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. This guy's on a mission.
I'm on a mission today. Monkey around.
I like it.
Yeah. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a football game on? We want to get going.
That's exactly your life thing. The Vikings aren't even playing.
No, I don't care about that.
Funny.
Roll call. We're all here. Full house tonight. Good deal. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, move.
Support.
Motion by Rude. Support by lot of any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Visitor input. I don't believe there's anybody here that would like to speak. Moving on. Consent agenda. There is one edit at 4.2. Should say $33 an hour, not 34. That was originally included in our packet. So with that edit, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will vote. I'll second.
Motion by Bonner, second by Calverdall. Any discussion?
I just wanted to, I clarified with Noel, but just in case other people were wondering as well about the Ojibwe language teacher, there's also an advisor that was new as well. And Noel said that there was some funding that we needed to be spending and that's the result of it. Correct? Is I, am I saying that correct Noel?
Yep, that is absolutely correct. We received some unexpected monies to hire an Indian ed working on the language. And so that, Maria, the Indian ed advisor, met with the principals last week and talked about which buildings and the rotation that would be going. So that money is coming from a grant, not from the general fund.
So the hire for 14 or 4.17, that hire is going to be in all the schools. So Laurentian, Parkview, North Star, and the high school. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. 5.1, school to work engagement and fundraising update with Mr. Willie Spels.
Well, thank you, Johan, from the school board. I haven't seen much of you guys yet this year, so I have a lot to tell you. Hopefully you've had a chance to read it beforehand. A lot of great things are happening at the, in the school to work engagement position and the fundraising. So let's get started as it's a nice, easy flow here. Thank you to Allison Privet for $4,500 and $4,500 match from State Farm, which is year five of six for a $9,000 total donation for the naming rights on the varsity baseball scoreboard. I've been a part of this monthly AMPA meeting and it is manufacturing tour month. And this has been a great group for our CTE classes. We meet often and a lot of planning just went into the manufacturing month. Our kids will be heading to the Duluth Superior area, four buses, four different, all beyond one. That comes up a bit, but we'll go on tours of manufacturing facilities. It has a profound impact on the students to see all of this in all of these big facilities. So I'm looking forward to that with teachers Fury I. Colts and Taryn Greiner and myself. We will be heading down to the Duluth Superior area. And the LEED CTE network is a group, again, CTE, in case you don't remember, is career and tech ed or shops when we were growing up. Depending on your age, I'm getting older now, so it's still up in shops. But that is what CTE is called now, career and tech ed. And there is a statewide effort and funds available to be in this LEED CTE network. And we just kicked off a big Sunday, Monday in St. Cloud. And then another one recently, virtually, thanks to the PR star Shannon Mulliver that couldn't buy sorcery and paying for my membership and being able to go to that. It's really good to be at the table during that stuff because the stuff that I can bring back is very useful for our teachers and to see how people are doing things. Another good group to be a part of that I'm lucky to be with is the Greater Twin Cities United Way. They're building a movement group. Last year, we received a $10,000 grant from our local United Way through the Building a Movement grant. And I will be applying for another one. Elizabeth Kelly is a true hero over there at the Chisholm United Way. So thank you to her, the Northeastern Minnesota United Way group. And that funds allows us, our teachers, myself, all of us, to go to many different career exploration stuff and career academy stuff. So a lot of pathway development happening because of that money. Just received confirmation and today, the check for $7,000 from the Kamatsu Mining Corporation Foundation. So thank you Kamatsu. Really appreciate Jim Tooney at Kamatsu. These are the relationships that I've been able, that I've been able to develop over the years. He actually called me last spring and said, hey Willie, our foundation is looking for some, some grants. And you guys got anything ready? And that's an easy one for me because I'm always in contact with Foster Fury and I. Colts. And yes, I'm ready. He said, well, can you get it in by Friday? Yes, I can. And they sent us $7,000 according to what we sent in. So thank you Kamatsu Foundation and Jim Tooney for doing that. This has been a lot of fun. If you can see it online, I've been working with Phil Drobnik, a very strong supporter of Rock Ridge, whether it's through the Golden Bear Foundation where he is on the board or right now as the United States Curling Coach. He, they're hosting the big event on the 16th through the 23rd, I believe, 19th through the 26th at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center and at Curl Masabi here. And in talking to Phil, I said, hey, I'm pretty sure you probably want some people in the stands. He goes, yeah. I said, let me try to organize this and get some people to come and watch because I always kind of hear and see people talking about curling. And it really took off. And then Phil said that he would reach out to the Curl Masabi Foundation to get funding for the buses. So our kids are going to get to go for free. And we got lucky enough to have Molly coming up to check any of that out. From her curling days. Wonderful. Tell her hello, please. But that's going to be a great event and a lot of our kids from second grade through high school will be going in and out of there to check out that event. We're also helping out by providing some leveled flooring for the judges at the Curl Masabi in Evlith. So on Thursday of MEA, Mike Hogan and I will be bringing some stuff over to help that event, to raise the timers one little spot. So it's been great to work with Phil on that and that's going to be an incredible event. So hats off to him and everybody involved with that.
Definitely great. Pardon? Definitely a great event for the area. I mean, it's going to be a lot of people and.
I love the worldwide part of it.
Yep.
Many of the teachers are studying the countries that are coming. And I did offer to try to bring some of those people from those countries to talk. And teachers are like, yes, if you can get people, I'd love to see someone from Japan and I'd love to have someone come from. So Phil's working on that to see if he can get people to come and speak to our kids from here.
Very cool.
That's going to be really cool. I kind of remember all of that when Giants Ridge was being built. Again, I'm aging myself, but in the early eighties, there was a lot of stuff that was happening when Giants Ridge was hosting that Pepsi Challenge that was an event that was going on. And that was cool because those people would come to our schools too. St. Louis County Grant, as we probably, if you remember last spring, we were awarded that. And I was able to turn in a, an invoice for $27,145.8. That's money that we were going to spend anyways because it's everything that we do, whether it be career fairs, whether it be my time for setting things up, whether it be transportation. And it all got reimbursed because of that grant, which is a great deal. So these funds were reimbursed for costs in areas that we did, like from the Job Shadow last spring, from the Pow Wow we hosted, career fairs we attended in Duluth in the local area, career exploration opportunities. So that leaves a balance of $101,000 for the next three quarters. And I just turned in about $42,000 more last week. And inside there, it's important for me to tell you because in times of money crunches, it's good to know that, remember there's $30,000 inside there just to pay for my salary. So that will come off and help the district save some money. And then I'm also able to turn in time that I do setting up all these events. On top of that $30,000, 10 or 12,000 more has already come back. So we're up to about $42,000 in reimbursement, just kind of for myself over the entire year. So that should be helpful. Tours this summer were a lot of fun. Many June and July Saturday mornings for those two to three hours. It truly is a lot of fun and it's amazing every time, every single time. This was obviously the fives. So I think 65 and 75 and 85 and there was an 80, I can't remember them all. But all of them say, my God, could I come back to school? When they see that place. Every time I wait for it, it's usually about, I don't know, it's about two hour tour, about 40 minutes into it, they go, my God, can I come back to school? This is incredible. So that's a lot of fun. Thank you to Cindy Weston, who was in charge of the VHS 75 reunion. They made a $250 donation. And thank you to Tracy Addy. When I did a Gilbert group, she handed some banana bread over. So that was very nice of her. Pathful is our student system that allows them to explore careers. You may have heard it before, as MCIS, we use Pathful. Explore careers, learn how to do resumes, get a resume stored in there. Practice interviews, look at interview questions. It's a big engine full of phenomenal career stuff. And I want to make sure that we prioritize that this year in my job with the minimal power that I have. But we're getting it for sure to every ninth grader now in our career exploration class. Been hit and miss over the years. This year, we're making sure every ninth grader is in there. And then as they get in 10th grade, we hope that some teachers will bring them back in there. They can take this inventory that tells them an aptitude of what they kind of know. And then also what they are, the results show what they should maybe consider going into, which obviously aligns perfectly with our career academy and our pathway system. So that's been great and it provides, you know, labor market, you know, information and students to explore careers, all the stuff that I have written down there. So that was $7,000 this year. Guess what? Free. Because the county grant paid for that also. So another savings right there for the district, all things that I'm trying to do for us. Great turnout for our Rock Ridge culinary students at the Chili Cookoff at the Iron Trail Motors event. Take a look at there. That is a student submitted report. I think later on I talk about Eureka. How about we have our journalism students? I reached out to Janessa Greenlee and said, hey, can you send a journalism student with us? Maybe they can do the report on the event. And she said, well, it just so happens that one of my journalism students is going there. And so Sophie Lenich made a great report there, sent some pictures. And then I'm able to share it out on LinkedIn. And Stacy does a great job sending it out on all of our social media. So I look forward to more of that. And what I turn up, one vote. One vote. And I didn't try to go change anybody's votes after I heard that. I probably, no, just kidding. But it was great. The people were super impressed with our kids. They did a super, tremendous job. So well done, kids. And well done, Mrs. Andry. She's putting her time in till eight, nine o'clock that night. That was very good. Mrs. Andry also took a group of students to St. Paul because we had some funding through the same St. Louis County Grant to a Cisco food event. And there is an incredible letter that a student wrote that I'm hoping I can read to you or send to you that she couldn't believe it was unsolicited, how much that trip to St. Paul meant to her and the number of things she saw that she had never seen before. And thank you so much for taking me on this trip. And just the people that she saw and the cultures that she saw and everything. It was super cool. So I'm just waiting for permission to be able to share that with you guys as a group. Because of what we're doing here at Rock Ridge, the IRRB knows that I'm in charge of the, you know, director of school to work engagement. So all of a sudden this summer, Ida Rukavina sent me a message, hey Willie, we're going to send you this guy. He's looking for some workers. He's doing some stuff. He's got some things going on. He's working with us. We may help fund his project, this and that, but he wants to work with you. Or I want you to meet him. So I meet this Terry guy who's got an incredible past in the CTE world. And on the side, he travels with the Minnesota Vikings, moves all their stuff. Was in London, just now moves all their stuff, every game, puts it on buses, puts it on planes, travels with them everywhere he goes. But he is looking for workers and all of that info is in here coming up. He lives in Big Sky, Montana, but he's got a project in Buell and Gilbert and Duluth. And one day I said, well Terry, when are you going to be in town? I'd like to have you talk to the kids. And he said tomorrow. And like me, he's a little bit hyper and kind of spontaneous and it worked out great. Mr. Foster opened up his class and Fury and I. Colts brought their kids in. So they got to have a great conversation with this professional. He was going 1,000 miles an hour on the telly. Told them, well, it's just, you can do the same thing I am. You just have to have the energy and the interest and the grit to do it. It was, it was a great message. So that was a lot of fun. And then at the end of it, donated $1,500 to Mr. Foster's ice fishing house. So that was, it was just a full circle moment. That was great. But I appreciated the IRR sending them to us because they know of the good things that we're doing in that CTE world. The volleyball program, I want to get this recognized. I got this info from Fritz Quaternic. He was in charge of this as he was helping the volleyball season get started. Joe Saw, thank you for the welding repairs to the volleyball cart. Estimated $200, $220, Joe did it for free. Thanks, Joe. Bill Hendrickson repaired and replaced the straps on all three sets of volleyball post pads. New pads are 600 a pair. Bill did all the work for free. Thanks, Bill. And the Florida Ceiling Store donated enough high-traffic carpet to recover all five boxes. Thank you to the Florida Ceiling Store. And thanks Fritz for giving me this info and organizing all that. So they each got a picture of the varsity team signed by all the girls. So well done at the local level by everybody. So thanks to everybody. Need donation from Tony Person. We talked a little bit about Tony. Came and visited us last year, a professional in the science world, which are oftentimes hard to find, but it was neat to have the local connection. And Tony was so happy to come home. I reached out to Tony and I said, Tony, what are the chances that you guys have this machine that Mr. Strasser is looking for? And they donated an Eppendorf master cycler, thermo cycler to the science department. If you know what that is, you are us. Much better science person. Yeah, I didn't say better person. I said much better science. No. Much better science person than me. But Tony, thank you. Mr. Strasser, thanks for needing such a high-tech piece of equipment. And we were able to find it. So thank you, Tony. And Bio Techni for making that donation. And he sent us, you know, if you have any tech questions, they gave us their tech person. So when we get it running, it'll be great. Stacy, your go-home beginning of the year, Rock Ridge information. I think got this nice donation from Dale and Catherine Creamers. They are alums who had kids and everybody come through and they suddenly sent $100. And I'm guessing it's because they read that because it got mailed to all the houses. So well done. Thank you Dale and Catherine Creamers for that. Stacy, is the Pohaki thing on there tonight? I can't remember if not.
Yep.
We have to move it. It is good. Thank you. So you'll see that action item. Special thank you to Brandon Cephalat-Pohaki for their sponsorship of the Pohaki Construction Lab at North Star Elementary School. Remember, we have a Pohaki Construction Lab at Rock Ridge High School. They donated $5,000 worth of tools last year with Scott when he was there and Eli Little and Ed Creamers. So now we're making it official. There's a new sign that's going to be up upon your approval. So thank you, Brandon. Your support from Pohaki is fantastic. Another alum, there's so many alumni that are willing to help. That brings me to Russ Becker from the API Group real quick. Was here last week. Drove up, I mean, this guy runs 78 billion dollar company. 1984 grad from Virginia High School, good friend of mine. Yeah, Willie, I got to get back up there. I want to talk to the kids again. And when they come, they have to speak for six periods, guys. It is, it is a meat grinder when they get here and they are going like crazy. And Russ came up here and he tells the story that he's from Virginia. His wife is from Evlith, Trish Gulon, and his wife says that he married up. We all know. So it's kind of funny to hear him do that, but it's great to see that. And I tease him and say, well, like me, my folks were Virginia-Evlith. You two are Virginia-Evlith. We're all, you know, early on Rock Ridgers. But it was great for, it's so great to have these alumni, Brandon doing what he does, Russ being willing to come up on such a busy schedule. So thank you to all of those people and Brandon thanks, as I was talking about the Pohaki agreement. Special thanks to the Virginia Community Foundation, again, which houses two funds for us. The foundation houses two funds. Okay. And Jennifer, you were a part of that. I probably say that every time, but it is important to know that that's the only reason it's still going is because you were a part of getting it started. And this year, the Rock Ridge Education Fund, we work off the interest from an endowment. We get the interest each year. We have $11,867 to spend, which is fantastic. And the Wolverine Fund, which is a second one inside there as we've talked about, has $13,231 to spend. Thank you to all the donors that go through the Virginia. Tim, you were a part of that too. I'm so sorry. You were a part of all that starting too. So thank you very much. And none of this happens without you either. The Wolverine Fund is only Minnesota State High School League activities. It's important to know that. How come? How come? Well, no, no, that's specific. That you got, you two got started before. So thanks for that. And then the Education Fund has a much bigger umbrella that it can cover. There was a special increase in the Wolverine Fund. Thank you to the Prittan family for their beautiful decision to donate funds from Elaine Prittan, who recently passed away, who us tennis people, we know. Jim's mom and Jim and Jeannie and Joanne, they decided to give extra money to Wolverine Fund this year in her memory. So the Prittan family who we just talked about, Jim is a part of it right now as the state tennis. Jennifer just told me the tennis team made it to the state tournament. Hello, tennis. They've had over 50 years of involvement there. So that's very nice that they did that. So that's the Virginia Community Foundation. Neat student success story here. Sometimes these just pop up or I'll talk to a kid in the hallway and say, hey, I remember you were going to, how did that go? Well, this one was super fun. Hi, Mr. Spels. It's Isabel. I passed my CNA exam last year as a junior with the help of the CNA class taught by Mrs. Rantala, an amazing mentor, and started working at Water View Pines in Virginia this summer. During the school year, I'm working afternoon shifts, 2:30 to 11:00, and they are very flexible with their staff. After my senior year, I'll be going for my LPN and then continuing my career in nursing.
Awesome.
Yeah, incredible. Exactly what, you know, matches Dr. Schmidt and the school board's vision. When we started all this, it's just a little capsule of it's working. It's working. It's working. So I appreciated that information. Mr. Foster did an externship this summer with Yulin Brothers. And during that, he made some great relationships and was able to talk to people. And we're lucky to have Brooke Donnelly at Yulin, who's an alum from Virginia. So we have immediate access to Yulin and Mr. Foster has that. So as they were doing this at the beginning of the year, I saw Brooke earlier, probably towards the middle, end of summer, I said, Brooke, we got to get our kids out to that project on the roundabout. She goes, yeah, that'll be great. Check in. And then Greg and I talked when school started. He said, yeah, I was talking to Brooke. And she said, you were talking to her. So we brought our kids right out there. It was fantastic. We were watching concrete being poured. We were watching loaders. They stopped everything, came down and talked to Foster's kids that day. Had to be 20, 25 kids out there listening to all the careers and seeing everything that's done and all of those people's pathways. It was exactly right. So I like, you know, when teachers are willing to do that stuff. So way to go, Mr. Foster. And thanks to Yulin and Brooke for doing that for us. Another project Mr. Foster has going on, he wants to make sure these things get out there. They're building ice fishing houses. And then they're going to put them up for sale. So they worked with, they collaborated with the college and learned how to aluminum weld. Because we don't have an aluminum welder, they do aluminum weld. So they made the skids and right now they're putting all the walls up. They're making everything and they're insulating. They're cutting out the holes. They're building the floors. They're doing the doors. They're doing the windows. They're doing the roof. They're doing absolutely everything for it. So Mr. Foster wanted to make sure. Hello, Willie. Here's a list of donations that I have secured for this project in the last couple of weeks. I'm receiving some really good support and traction with this project and the kids are all in. Vertex Roofing, Travis Peterson, 10 rolls of coil stock aluminum, $1,750 value. Pernsteiner, that's Terry that I talked about early, Pernsteiner Builders, Terry Pernstein, are building materials, $1,500. He also donated a game used Minnesota Vikings football to be given to the student. Auctioned off or given to a good student in CTE course. Grayden Outdoors, 30 catch covers, a $750 value. Pohaki framing material, $780. All of these people are donating this because they see what's going on in those classrooms and want to help. So thank you to all of them. As I referenced earlier, we won't do too much with it. Reached out to Janessa and now we have kids that are going on these trips and then going to give us reports back. I think that's exactly what journalism is. Of course, a journalism teacher might say, Willie, it's way more than that. I know, I know, but this is pretty darn close. So looking forward to that. Our ninth grade career exploration speakers are flying this year already. We've got some great speakers. Talked about Mr. Becker. We've got more. We've got Kirk Widener coming this week. We've had Janelle Wapala. We've had great people already in all kinds of different careers. They filled up in about two and a half hours when I sent out the email. And just people saying, yeah, I'll come all day. You bet, Willie. Give me this date. Give me this date. Give me this date. Actually had to turn some people away. Did add a non-Wednesday for someone. And it's just been wonderful, the support from the people. So that's every Wednesday, the professionals from our community come in. Huge thank you to those people coming in. Our students went to a monster Discover Healthcare event on September 29th at Yanmar Arena in Grand Rapids. Thanks to Mary and Tim Strasser, Mary Rantala and Tim Strasser for bringing them. And it was a great experience for our kids. And thanks to North Stars Perkins Consortium, Shannon Mulliver for funding that event. Another fantastic foundation that we have, the Golden Bear Foundation. Grants were sought and received and over $9,000 will go out from the Golden Bear Foundation this fall. Just from, and they'll do another one in the spring. So if you add that up, we're sitting at 20, 30, 40, $50,000 eventually almost from these foundations. These are people outside of us that are donating money somewhere because they know it's going to come back and help our kids and help our schools. So thank you, Golden Bear Foundation, for all of your work. We have submitted a grant with Lake Country Power for the funds to support the Deep Winter Greenhouse. After I saw that that opened, I called Keith Peterson. The two of us worked together. We got that grant submitted. So hopefully, if anybody knows anybody from Greg Schulzenberg or Mark Bach or Tracy, Tracy Werken, anybody like that, give them a little nudge and say, hey, I heard Rock Ridge is in there. Hopefully they'll consider us. And we'll see what we can get. And then just recently, almost done folks, in collaboration with Don Savila, who doesn't like to miss school. So she said, Willie, can you take them? I said, of course I can. Rebecca Diedrich and I took the kids to a huge leadership, leadership conference at the ITMEC with Keith Turner. And I think you guys have seen Keith before. It was great. The kids were awesome. They had a wonderful time and learned a lot. So that was a ton of fun. So I think that's it. You have a grant coming up later to consider from the IRRB, a workforce grant, but I can talk a little bit more about that later. Any questions? I know it was a lot.
A lot of good news.
We can't thank the people and the businesses enough for all their generosity and supporting our students and what we're trying to do here. It's been great.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Brandon. They have, they're incredible. We're truly that lucky.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willie.
Thank you.
I might as well stay, Johnny. I think it's Scott and I are the next one.
Okay, five, two, Pathways and Capstone Presentation.
Okay. So oftentimes, we've been talking about the academy and sometimes when you're in a position, you don't know where to move or step or not step because you're not in charge of it and you just kinda wait and wonder and, you know, keep working with, well, we're ready to activate this. And Scott and I have talked about it, so here comes the information with the academy model. And inside the academy model, there's pathways. Okay, and you have that info in front of you. There's pathways for all of the career pathways for those of you listening at home. So that'll come up in the last three pages, but a big part of academy mod, the academy model and the pathways is a capstone project. What is it? How do you do it? That's going to come up in these next slides, okay? The culminating experience of a senior, basically, is what it would be of their learning journey where they can voluntarily, this isn't required, as we're just rolling it out this year, voluntarily, they'll want to do this because maybe it will help them get into a college or maybe it will help them get themselves ready for their career because it increases their knowledge so much. It's a professional presentation, it would be like a high school thesis presentation. Doesn't have to be a written paper from my generation. I gotta do a thesis, not going to that school. But I can do a project, wonderful, I'm gonna catch, I'm going to that school. Okay, so that's what this capstone is. It can, sure, if a student wants to do some research on something and present it to us and in front of a group of teachers and those of us when we put that panel together, absolutely. At the same time, they can come and tell us about their project because they're logging their hours, which might be a recycling project for the entire school. Or it might be, I'm going to work here and I'll be there. Work-based learning will be coming up at a couple of future meetings. That can work as a capstone project because while at their work-based learning, they got in over forty hours, which is what we want for the year at an hour, hour and a half a day, then they have to fill out some more information, come and share it and present their capstone. All of these are ideas, so please keep this as you have it and keep looking at it so you're familiar with the capstone project. So a driving question, like a project proposal. Okay. We want them to have a mentorship in the community. Now, if there's a reason they can't, of course, we'll do it in-house, but we want them to partner with somebody in the community, that's the whole point of this. It's the next level, it's raising their level of concern, it's changing the audience, it's putting them out there more than just doing it to their class or whatever. This is the next level of stuff. And then they can do some, you know, research, reflection documentation, and then the public presentation. Again, we'll put a board together, we'll invite you guys to be on it, to come see those who will celebrate this, but that comes up in a minute. Now, these are just full of ideas. Peer mentoring program, a community garden, that might become something in the future, right? Wellness initiative. Stand, these are just ideas, I'll get through these because we're in a role, but please make sure you take a look at it and it's out there for the public too, right Stacy? Okay, thank you. You can do all of this stuff. These are, now, those, those categories were a lot in our academies, okay? And our pathways, that's why it's broken out like that. How to get started? As you can see, this is probably next going to eventually end up in the student obvious and, but the parent too. It'll be a live document then, they'll be able to click on it. Is it required for graduation? No, not at this time. But we'd like to encourage kids, this gives kids the opportunity to go above and beyond. This challenges them, we already have kids that are interested, just in casual conversations. Recognition, we're working on it, but here's some ideas, Scott has some great ideas. But, you know, the immediate ideas, graduation program with an asterisk or whatever we decide. There's an awards assembly every year, we'll bring up the pathway completers and/or the capstone completers. Graduation honor court, we will also have a celebration. It'll be my job to find somebody to sponsor it. Feed them, bring their parents, celebrate this, this is a big deal. And if you haven't seen this, now you have it, right? And I'm sure Mark presented it many times, but now we're activating it. Mark did a great job on this. Difficult to see, I know, might be easier to look at that one. But here's the story of the Natural Resources Engineering Manufacturing Architecture and Construction. Tells you the story about it, the jobs you can get. A required course, ninth grade career exploration, already required, every kid takes it. But then you must complete six of these courses. And then do a capstone project, and then guess what? If you've taken the required, finished six, did a capstone, you have completed the capstone and the pathway. We might have some kids that just completed capstone, that's fine right now, completely fine. But imagine completing the capstone and the pathway. But that's going to take some work with the counselors and registration and course offerings. Here's the next one, Business Information Technology Communications and Arts. Two required in this one, we're gonna, we will revisit that. But then you must take five of these because there's two required. Again, the capstone, pathway completion, more ideas here. Great info here about pathways and capstones. So now you have that info. In case somebody talks to you, hey, what are they doing with those pathways and capstone? Let me show you. And the final one, Health Science and Human Services. Career Exploration, six courses. Tells you all the jobs that are available, the pathways that it matches. Because I, I've talked to Stacy about this when her daughter went to Stout. I remember looking at Stout, um, just as my kid was gonna be going to school in next year, so I thought I'd look. Their school is identified by clusters. And that's exactly how we need to align, which is how the academy model works. It just makes sense to take courses that interest you and give you a final finish in something, not just some random stuff. So we'll get better at that now that we're activating this. We'll get better at making sure kids are taking the courses that will, if they're interested, that will help them finish this stuff. Next steps, we already did it. First one, got it in front of their high school teachers. We will get it in front of the seniors very soon, Scott and I will follow his lead on that. Confirmation, we'll find out how are we going to check everybody, and I did find out that the kids can. The kids have access to their transcripts through Power School. So that's part of the leadership and ability of doing it too. Being responsible to say, hey, Mr. Speltz, hey, Mr. Manny, hey, my mentor in the school who's helping me get through this, I think I, I think I qualify. And then how the recognition will go is still being discussed, but we have the three plans that we'll do. Any questions?
Exciting, I like the progression, I like to see it moving forward.
Good, thank you.
Do you think this is gonna happen with some of our students this year?
I do.
Yes.
I do.
Okay.
I've got some right now that Rebecca Diedrich will get this in front of the NHS kids. I have some kids right now that I think are very close inside the CTE world. But once we get it in front of them, I, I do think we'll get some. Talked to Mrs. Galloway, she's got some kids that are interested. Okay.
Great.
Yeah, I do.
No, it's also what's gonna, what's set us apart from other high schools in the country, that this is the level that we're gonna, that our graduates are gonna be leaving us with.
I like it.
Exciting.
Very exciting.
Me too.
Awesome.
All right, I just got two things, one is, please.
Wait a minute, am I on, am I on here?
You've been up here long enough.
All right.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you, Dave. You know, Willie. Please congratulate our girls tennis team. I just, they are from here. One of many this year. Um, the second one is somebody, um, just wanted to give you a rundown on bowling and what we're doing just so you kinda have our framework. The first of them is we don't play games with bowling at high school. You guys know me from North Star Elementary, um, and my feelings on bowling in schools. So the first one is our deans investigate everything, all families are contacted. Our SRO Lieutenant Swenson can be involved if needed to be part of it. All the appropriate staff then get informed so they can be on the lookout. Then we log everything into Power Schools, we investigate. And then the deans report to me what the kinda outcomes, what's going on. And then I wanna let you know what kind of, uh, in our handbook, we have a tiered consequences. The first one is, and this is either bowling or contributing to bowling, is an hour of detention. The second is one to three days in school or out of school. The third is four to five days in school or out of school. And then the last is possible expulsion, just so we're clear on that. Um, one of the things we wanna do is, we sometimes like to bring them together, do a restorative practices, get the students together if that fits for that situation, to kinda work through that and build on some skills on how you can get along. And then the last one, so you know, if applicable, I then follow up with the families as another layer of transparency to make sure everybody at the high school is doing what they need to do. So I just wanted to make sure.
I'll be thinking.
Thanks.
It's important to note, it's bowling prevention month also.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Five point three, North Star Elementary Principal Report, Gina.
She's only carrying one piece of paper.
But, there's lots of writing. Ah, good evening, board members, um, I'm coming to you, I, I feel like I have a plate full, but, um, there's, there is a ton of things going on, um, exciting things that have happened or gonna happen, um, at the North Star. So, uh, I'm gonna back up to the beginning of the year. Uh, we started our year off, um, with the kids doing the things that they had already done last year with the systems, um, the cleaning of the cafeteria, the outside grounds and things like that. Um, those systems that, uh, Mr. Manny and the teachers at the North Star Elementary had set up, we just continued that into this year and that's been going really well. Um, the kids are really taking care of the building and their spaces. Um, we did our benchmark testing, so we got those, those scores to see where our kids are falling in the fall of this year. Um, benchmark testing happens three times a year for us, so we have our beginning score. Um, all of our kids, as well as our teachers, have set goals, which is a part of our Leader in Me curriculum, but they've set goals for where they wanna be by the end of the year. And we've also identified any gaps or skills that we need to work on. So, um, I just wanna be known that Sarah Steele, that you have approved the higher up through our access grant is, is in our building, three days a week, um, helping with some of those interventions as well as Amanda Morley in our title program, helping with those interventions. So, um, between the teachers, the interventionists, the access, we're, we're really working hard on trying to make sure that our students are where they need to be and we're filling any, um, skill gaps that we need to fill. We have participated in the Orange Shirt Day, um, back a few weeks ago, a week or two ago, um, as well as, like Brandon said, Stoplight Bowling Day, I think that was on Monday of this past week, not, not today, but this past week, so. And, uh, we just, as a staff, um, I don't wanna say implemented because we've had Crisis Go, but we had the tech team come in, um, and talk to our staff about the Crisis Go app and how that's going to be able, we're gonna be able to utilize that and help us with, um, school safety, things that are going on. Having Byron Megan as a dean at North Star, I will tell you, is a lifesaver for me. Um, he has done phenomenal things with the kids and is able to, um, deal with a lot of the behaviors and a lot of the systems that were already going from last year and continue that. So, um, it's been great to have him and he's, he's a great resource for the families coming in as, as they're, um, he's introducing himself to them and they're working with him through different situations. Great level wise, um, third graders, they, they came in, um, it's an adjustment coming from Heartview to North Star. You know, it's a big, a big change, a new building, um, but they're, they're adapting very well to the North Star, North Star life, they're kind of having to do a few more things on their own. Um, but they've been working with the sixth graders as Wolverine buddies. So our sixth graders have really taken on that, that role of helping them as their buddies. And they are doing the, um, Reading Champions Program, um, through United States Steel again out of Pittsburgh. I know that they did it last year, um, and they're doing that again, um, this year. It's, I, I know the materials are on their way to us right now. As well as, um, that book vending machine, they were able to, through that program, purchase us a book vending machine. That is also, it's in production right now, it's, it'll be on its way to us within the next month, they said. So, eventually, North Star will have a book vending machine that we will greatly utilize for, for different things. So, um, our fourth graders have done a lot of, um, things, I, I wanna say with the community, between going to the school florist and the Laurentian Divide, not all the classes do all of them, but those are some of the things that they've done. They were out raking for the residents across the street. They have started up Senior Citizen Pen Pals again this year. And then I know that, um, at least two of the classes are going to do a highway cleanup tomorrow. Fifth grade, uh, end of September, they participated in that Starbase program that we've done in the past. And I know last year we kinda talked about the expense of that and transportation and it was a huge expense for us, but, um, what a great program, I had the opportunity to go down there and, I mean, you, you kinda have to give your whole life full of documentation to get on the base, but, um, that was, that was a really neat program, the kids really enjoyed that. And they come home with some, um, neat STEM kits that they can implement back into their classrooms as well. So, a week of that, they're headed to Hop Ridge this week. And they are starting their, um, Main Street Trick or Treating Drive. They, they write letters to the businesses in downtown Virginia and in that surrounding area, um, asking if they could participate in the Main Street Trick or Treating, um, or business trick or treating. And then they, they handwrite them, they hand-deliver them, and then the teachers will correspond with the businesses to see if they can do that. I think this is their second year, maybe third, but they're working on that. Sixth grade, they, um, last week went to the STEM Showcase Inhibing. Um, that's a great event for the kids, they really look forward to that. Um, a bunch of different STEM things that, that are demonstrated for them that they get to kind of walk around and see. They did some lakeside cleanup, I, as I said before, third graders, they have their Wolverine buddies. And something that's really cool, um, Ms. Engel took her class, I'm not sure which class of sixth graders it was because she teaches all four science classes, but, um, they were out looking at different trees and things that are around in the, the area of North Star. And they found an underreported invasive species on pine trees. And the kids found it, so they took a picture of it, looked it up and went, um, and discovered that it was an invasive species. And they, um, collected samples and sent it off to the University of Georgia. So that was really neat. To me, yeah, actually, there's our, they're, they're making, making history here. And last but not least, coming up here, uh, we have fire safety, it's Fire Prevention Month, so we have fire safety at North Star on Wednesday. Uh, we have our conferences and book fair coming up, those are October twenty-third and twenty-eighth, um, for our conferences and the book fair runs consecutively with that. And then I know that somebody had mentioned Alexander Hayes, the Ojibwe, um, language teacher that we have hired in the district through that grant. Um, he is starting to set up some lessons. Um, I know he's going in with sixth grade to meet some of their standards there, he's working with the history teacher there, but he's also setting up lessons with all the other grade levels, has sent out, he's just taken Bull by the Horns and sent out some, um, information to get into all the classes, so. There's lots going on, um, and it's been great.
It's been good.
North Star's, it's, we're smooth sailing right now, so.
That's great.
Questions for me?
Keep it rolling, any, any questions for Gina?
Very positive.
Oh, thanks Gina.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Highway cleanup, are you doing the, that stretch of the old highway between the lakes north of Virginia?
Um, I don't know the answer to that, sorry. I know, it's the one that they have always done, Beth Collins, and I believe it's Beth Collins and Alyssa Keeman.
Okay.
It's the one that they've always done.
They need new signs on it.
Thanks, you'll, you'll get on that for me?
I will, I will, I will, 'cause I did, I did it for our Leo club.
Okay, yeah, no, I.
That's why I asked, if it is, I, I'll contact the DOT and, and have new signs put in.
Yeah, and I can get the answer for that for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point set off, awards.
I'm getting, I'm delegating.
Thank you, Director Yohan, I have a slight cold, so if I sound a little strange, that's why. The primary thing to go with you and to go over with the board is the upcoming, if you say yes, what would happen during the informational dialogue and listening sessions? So you have in front of you a rough. So you have in front of you a rough draft. If you're watching on TV, rough draft. So this is just how it might unfold. And three big questions though, would be, when we do these, will be, I think it's important for us to find out from the community, for you to find out from the community, have we kept our promises? Back in 2019, when the first public vote happened, and then there was, that was when the decision was made to construct a building, and that was simply to work together, Evelith Gilbert and Virginia, to build the buildings. Then in 2001 year later, there was a consolidation vote. Going back in time, do you believe the school board has done what they told you was going to be done at the time? I think that's really important to do that. And then a lot, so one question I think we need to ask is, have we kept our promises? In 2019 and 2020, the word "promise" was not used. It was simply, this is what we would like to do. This is what we will do with the money, but people consider them promises. So I'm gonna use the word "promise" because that's kind of how the general public is gonna view this. Did we do what we said we were going to do? And then the second question would be, well, okay, how are we doing right now? What do you think? And then the third one is probably the most important one. What do you want to tell the school board? Do you have any feedback? Do you have any information that they want to tell you folks? What do you need to know that they would like to tell you? And even though this is not the same school board as exists in 2019 and 2020, and all this really started in 2018, because I've actually worked with about 27 or 28 school board members over the past 10 years. And I think, Tim, you're probably, Tim and Brandy, you're probably the two, John, you're close, but it's been a long, a lot of different school board members. However, the vision has always stayed the same. The direction has always stayed the same. So what I'm gonna go over with you is, this is not in final form, this is not in pretty form for what we would do, but this is the basic gist, the structure of what it would be. And so what I did is, I go to the next sheet, and you've seen this. This one just shows, and I think it's important for the public to see, to realize that since 2000, the money that you have is not the same as what school boards back in 2000 had. You, based upon the same student count, have $3 million fewer dollars than what school boards had in the year 2000. That's simply the erosion of inflation over time. So when people look at you and ask you, why are you wasting money? Why can't you make this work? Well, the short answer is, you don't have $3 million that the school board had back in 2000. So that's a good point to keep going. The next part is, and I broke this down, I looked at all the promotional material and the data we had sent to the voters because in elections, school boards do have the right to provide the voters with accurate information. And we did that, and there was a lot of information that was sent out. So this is the information we sent out, and this is an example of some of the stuff we need to ask. Have we actually done what we told the voters in 2019 and 2020? That matters. And a critical mistake many, some boards do, when they go to the voters again, is they don't bother going back in time to ask, have we kept our promises? Did we actually do what you thought we were going to do? We need to find out what the voters actually think about that. From their point of view, is this what happened? So here's what we said, so all of this here, in 2019 on this page, this is what we said to the voters that we were going to do. And I'm not gonna go through all of it, but it's kind of interesting looking at it through today's eyes because we did say we were going to build a high school based on career academies. And you just heard presentation of where your high school is at. It's probably the most remarkable high school in the state of Minnesota right now because of what's happening. There are some other things that we said. We were looking for economic development. We wanted a reliable future workforce. We wanted students spending time on things they actually enjoyed. We wanted kids to have less debt. We wanted potential businesses to be working with our kids. This is all stuff we said back in 2019. And in addition to that, on the high school level, we actually did say for academies. This is way back, because there was a huge number of steering committees that took place. We said we're gonna create pathways. We also said that we were going to look at college in the schools, advanced placement, seeing if we could get more of those in the high school today. We also said we didn't want to stick kids in a track and keep them in there. This was really important. We didn't want kids to say, hey, I'm gonna be over here and then not be stuck in case they change their mind. We also said we wanted more relevant, project-based learning, hands-on. We wanted unique learning spaces for seventh and eighth graders. We wanted our ninth and 12th graders to be able to work with local businesses and to actually go out, not just stay in the classroom. And you can kind of see where some of the answers are right now as far as what's happened. But this is what we said we were going to do. On the next page, this is actually from information we sent to voters, what we said to Career Academy was, at the time, what we thought it was going to look like. And you can see the Blue Devil and there's a bear in there because at that time, we're two completely separate districts. This is what we said we were going to do back in 2019. And it is amazingly close to what is actually happening today. On the next page, we also had an April informational flyer that we sent out to everybody. Got it? Because you, as a school board, can send out information to folks. And on the elementary schools, because remember, at the time, it was not just the high school, it was the elementary schools. And so at the time, with the elementary schools, we said that we wanted smaller group learning, we wanted collaborative workspaces, we wanted more maker spaces, we wanted easier access to technology, we wanted better lighting in the elementary schools, we wanted secure entrances, we wanted secure bus drops, we wanted 21st century indoor climate control, we wanted play spaces that worked for the kids. These are all things we said in 2019. So question is, okay voter citizen, have we done that? On the next page, we also said, and I'm taking this, when I say this, in 2019 or 2020, this is literally word for word what we said in our data. So I'm not doing a smoke and mirrors, I'm not manipulating data, because you can't do that. That doesn't work. So this all has to be above board. What did we really say was gonna happen? So in 2019, a big question was, where are these buildings going to be located? It was a big to-do back then, if you remember. So on the next page, I just included, this is the actual map that we included in 2019 that went out to all the citizens that clearly showed where the new elementary school in Virginia was going to be, right smack dab where Roosevelt was. It also shows right where the new Evelith Gilbert, at the time it was Evelith Gilbert. It wasn't called the Redson at the time. The location where it is, and the building was constructed right where the school board in 2019 said it was going to be. And the high school is right exactly where the school board in 2019 said it was going to be. On the next page, there was the same informational flyer. We also said we were looking to do some other things at the time. These are important to go back to, to think about what we were trying to do at the time and what the community was looking for and wanted. And all the information that I'm talking about, this came out through 100-plus community meetings. There was a massive survey that went everywhere, so we had data. So this is stuff that came up from the community. We also said in 2019, we wanted environments designed to inspire joy and passion. We didn't want to build boring, ugly brick buildings that nobody wanted to learn in. We also said we wanted immediate, real-world application. We wanted to integrate community professionals in with it. And even that, back then, the business committee was very interested in doing this for lots of different reasons. We wanted adaptable learning spaces, which is why we have some walls that can move in our buildings. We also thought at the time, this would help home values. We thought this would help as an attraction, a retention policy. It might help get some businesses in the area that people would see this as a place of pride, a place of joy. Did we do that? And then we also said that, and I brought some things up here that I know are sore spots, but I'm not bearing any data. I'm not bearing anything that the board in 2019 said they were going to do. The buildings, we said in this flyer in 2019 that any remaining buildings, we could not sell, we could not repurpose, we could not do redevelopment within two years. We would try to do it for two years after the referendum date. And that's what happened. The buildings were still standing, the ones that had to be, and then they were taken down. We also said, secure entrances. There is one thing on here, because I'm not trying to bury any data. One of the things we said in 2019, we thought we could save $2.5 million on operating costs because of the buildings, switching to better insulation, more modern. I don't know if we've done that. So we'll get some data, we'll put that in there because we don't want to hide anything. This is what we thought was gonna happen. This might be one where I'm not sure we hit that mark on. We actually wanted to also look at the Americans with Disabilities, ADA, make the buildings more accessible so people could get into the building. Because if you remember, at the time, in Virginia, that auditorium, and I know it had a lot of positive feelings from people, if you were handicapped in a wheelchair, that was an extremely difficult auditorium to get into. It was really hard. Because it was built when that wasn't what people thought about. In 2019, on the next page, finance. What were we telling people was going to happen? So at the time, we said that of the $178.5 million, about 81% of the cost would come from the IRR and state aid. And the rest of it would come from us. And we also had some data showing that if each individual district did it, it would cost more and there'd be more of a tax on the welfare people. This is the average home value that existed in 2019. All those home values are higher, not because of the fact that the new buildings are here, but for those who are worried that the home values are gonna plummet because new buildings are gonna show up or the taxes, it hasn't happened. The reverse has actually happened. And you can see, we also said we wanted safe buildings, we wanted community support, we wanted better education and more career opportunities for our kids. On the next page I've got, and I think this is important to show people, this is the actual picture of what was included in that 2019. This is what we thought at the time, the average typical taxpayer was going to get taxed on each value of the house or the business. And what happened after that, and we'll show some information. What actually happened is that the amount of taxes that people paid actually was less than what we thought at that time. And that occurred because you had really favorable bond ratings when you go through the process of selling the bonds, and we had some good luck with interest rates at the time. So the taxpayers actually was, it was less than what we actually thought and predicted in 2019. But that almost certainly is gonna come up. On the next page, I'm number F. And I'll put, if you say go, I'll put this in simpler slides when we go to the community. But this is the actual graph chart that we used and we put in publications. Because at the time, and we had to go through a process to get this, we were anticipating the IRR would be contributing $4.9 million a year for the past 20 years. We actually are five-plus years into it. We're 25% of the way through it, and they have done that for those five years. We actually thought the state of Minnesota would be chipping in $5.5 million for 20 years. They have done that. And then the local taxpayers would be paying actually the least amount of all, about $2 million for 20 years. So we're actually about 25% of the way about paying all of these off. We also actually said, and I put this in there, there's some Q and A information because at that time, we were running a lot of Q and As because there were a lot of rumors, there was a lot of gossip coming up about this was gonna happen, that was gonna happen. So we had to run a lot of Q and As to keep everybody informed about what was going on. And this is the actual wording from some of those Q and As so you can see what people were concerned about at the time. Who gets this deal? The answer is, nobody at the time. Because there was a lot of change that also occurred. In addition to the IRR contribution, we also used Virginia's better rate to make the state of Minnesota help us by paying more rather than what the taxpayers normally would have paid. And that was a huge deal. Since that time, to my knowledge, no other school district in the state of Minnesota has gotten this. Another thing that happened, and I bring this up again because I know this has been a sore spot with some individuals. What's gonna happen to the older vacant buildings? What did we actually say was gonna happen to the buildings? This is what we actually said, this is the exact wording. The last sentence on this, after several years, if there are no individuals or businesses or developers who are interested in the buildings, then the buildings will be torn down. And the school boards over the years were very resolute on this. You did what you said you were going to do. You tore the buildings down because they couldn't be repurposed. On the next page, we're getting closer to the end, hang in there for a little bit longer. There was another Q and A in March of 2020. Again, this is the exact wording that we used with the people telling you what was gonna happen. At the time, there was a consolidation vote in 2020. There were two votes, 2019, should we build them? 2020, should we consolidate? And there was a lot of discussion at the time. What's gonna happen if we don't consolidate? The reality is, yeah, there would have been three school districts. Evelith Gilbert, Virginia, and then the one running the high school. And there would be three school boards. We also said that, and we knew that busing would be impacted. If we have three districts, you have buses running all over the place, you have money you're not gonna get from the state of Minnesota. And we told the people, yeah, you're gonna lose $450,000 in aid if you're not consolidating, and almost all of that money we needed because we needed new uniforms and everything else. And that's how we paid for a lot of that. In addition to it, and I know some of you still don't believe this, but we did cut about half a million dollars out from the admin because of the consolidation. In addition, there were some bus routes we collapsed and saved money on busing. And that was, because some individuals at the time did not believe that would actually happen. So we'll talk about, here's what actually happened with that, what we said. On the next page, and there's only a couple pages left. In another Q and A in April 2020, is again, this is the tax thing. So you can see exactly, and we'll tell people, this is exactly what we said was gonna happen in 2019, 2020. Is this what happened now that we're looking back? And you can see that what really happened is, because, speaking bluntly, Evelith Gilbert was worried that their taxes were gonna go really up high and Virginia was happy, to a certain extent, that their taxes were gonna go down. What really happened, after everything settled, the taxes ended up being about the same across the two districts. That ended up being a difference of about a buck and a half, two bucks a month on the same value home. And then, this was another one at the time in 2020, the consolidation. The board said, if we consolidate, if you say yes, we're gonna go to one superintendent, we're gonna go to one F suite contract, one principal contract, one teacher contract. if we consolidate, if you say yes, we're going to go to one superintendent, we're going to go to one absentee contract, one principal contract, one teacher contract. Everything's going to go into one. And we're going to eliminate those positions that we don't feel we need. That's what happened. On the last page, and this is only to put things in context, this is not what you said in 2019, 2020. But I think this is applicable, because my sense is that you're gathering information from the public to help you make decisions. Once all of this is over, if you say green light, go, you may come to the conclusion that, ah, let's not do anything. You could decide to do nothing. And that's a perfectly good decision, based upon the feedback you get. Or you could decide to do something. So what exactly is happening right now with the latest information I have with area schools on operating levy? You can see Rock Ridge is in there, we have $189 referendum levy per student. And this is now distributed to all kids, the entire Rock Ridge School District. We get about half a million, a little bit shy of half a million on there. And I also put in a column, you can see what the average home value is. And I put in all of the districts around us on the range, so you can see what's happening in area districts. And some districts have these, other districts don't. Heving is probably the one, they are going out for one. And so it will be interesting to see what happens there. Because they are almost exactly the same size. We're a little bit larger than Heving, but it'll be interesting seeing what happens there. So they've come to the conclusion they need to go out to the voters. You can see in the last column over there, because I've heard rumors of this, so I'm just going to put what the numbers actually go. You know, so of all the kids who are living in a district, what percent of the ADM are actually attending schools in that district? Here's what the state of Minnesota says with the last data that I have available to me. And you can see in Rock Ridge, for example, 94.64 of all students who live in the Rock Ridge School District are going to Rock Ridge Schools. So if you're hearing rumors of hundreds of kids going this way, hundreds of kids going that way, absolutely not true. Bogus, it is absolutely not true. And you can also see what's happening with area schools there. And then just for fun, I put down there, okay, what's happening off the range? So I put some metro schools down, so you can see the enormous disparity that's existing between range schools and some of the metro schools. The amount of money that they are raising, because they're getting 2,000, Bloomington, $2,219 a kid. That is almost 10 times what you're getting.
What about 153% of the ADM in Minnetonka?
Yep.
You get 5,000 kids enrolled in?
Yep.
Amazing.
And you, but you can see sometimes it works the other way. And then I put St. Francis in there, because I certainly don't accuse of picking high rollers. St. Francis, they do not have a operating levy. And only 82% of their kids actually go to their schools. So this is information that might be useful. And the ending one, I think I'm hoping that once this is over, if you see green light, you will know from the people. Now this includes, I'm anticipating, I would like you, recommend you do a survey with all of your residents after the community resident meetings are over. So you will know without a shred of doubt, what people are saying about, did you keep your promises? Did you do what you said you were going to do? And then, how did they think you're really doing right now? And then any feedback or advice that they would like to give you. And so you know exactly what the voters are going, and you don't have to rely on just what a small group or cluster of people are telling you. So that's kind of the mainframe of how I'm suggesting we approach this.
Is this from 2019?
Yep.
My house, I pay $73 more 2025 than I was, we were projected to pay in 2019 for taxes.
For a year?
Yeah.
Say that one more time, what now?
Here it says that I was supposed to pay $600 a year.
Yeah.
I'm paying $673. So we were pretty spot on, you know, six years ago.
My question would be on this page, second page from Ellers. And this is 2023, and you can see that this trend, it could be gap even, could be even bigger. Can we get a 2025?
I will, Ellers gave that, I will try and get an updated one from Ellers.
Might even be more drastic than you think.
So board members, you can think about it some more, and let me know what you think. If you decide to go ahead with community meetings, I would only ask that you let me know by the last board meeting in October. But then we just got to set it up and get things rolling on that end.
Let's put out the agenda for the next meeting then.
Okay.
Will we be able to get together to gather information? So I could, so when these questions do come up, if we do go to the community, I would have more knowledge. I mean, I just feel like there's some things that I don't know, you know, the answers to, or, I don't know. I didn't know if we would all get together, or
Like a working session?
A working session, just to discuss these, so we're all answering, or know the same.
We decide as a board to do it, yeah.
That's a good idea, yeah, I like that.
I'm just feeling like I, I, I'm going to be confident when I go into these meetings.
Right.
Knowing, so I don't know everything.
Nobody.
It's okay to say that though, too.
Pardon?
It's okay to say that though, too, when we go out and, you know, if we do end up going out and talking to people. It's okay to say, I'm not sure, I'm going to have to get back to you. And then, you know, reach out to administration on, on, you know, that question.
And the one thing you can be relieved on is that Noel will be doing most of these meetings. Seriously, because that's what he did, he and a group of people when we went out in 2018 and 19.
I was there, but however, we don't want to not have you participate.
Oh no, hey, we were there, yeah.
No, I want
But I, I agree with you, Jennifer, because, you know, you guys have been, and so there's a lot that we don't have knowledge. And even aside from the meetings, we are going to be inundated and ask questions ourselves. So it would be good to have a good handle on it, right?
I agree.
And, you know, maybe in the meantime, I'll write down questions that I need answers for, but I don't know. Just trying to, you know, think ahead, what might, you know, come at us, so.
Perfect, okay. Any other questions?
That's it.
Okay. 5.5, the treasurer's report, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Rudden?
Second.
Second by Westby, any discussion?
I would just, I was asking Noel earlier, I just noticed that there's a lot of consulting fees. Or, you know, at least they're, they're coded under consulting fees. And I just had some questions on, what exactly are we consulting about? Because it seems to be individual people in the consulting fees. So I was just curious on what that is. And Noel may not be able to answer today, but if, if we could get some information on, on what exactly that is, that would be great.
Yep, I will specifically look that up, so I don't mislead you tonight.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. 6.1, consider approval of IRR workforce development grant, request phase one. I get a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Colbert Dahl.
Support.
Support by Lotteger, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. 6.2, consider approval of naming agreement between our Rock Ridge Public School and Parky Lumber and Building Supply.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Westby.
Support.
Support by Rudden, any, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. 6.3, consider submitting a nomination for Rams Board of Directors for a two-year seat. Anybody have any interest in being on the Rams Board?
I know I, I applied and interviewed the last time, but I am not going to likely be on the board for two years. I have one, one year left of the term.
Okay. Tim?
Thank you for asking.
You're on every other board. All right, we'll just take no action.
I think we should, I saying that to the board, we're one of the largest, you know, I mean, to us and Grant. We're the largest school districts and we're, are you on there Noel?
Yep, I'm representing the principal group.
Yeah, so that, and I have heard, yeah, okay, perfect.
And I, just to throw it out there, I mean, I don't, I don't know if this is the case or not, but it was kind of mentioned that the last time around, because we do have Noel sitting on that board, it was more likely that somebody outside of Rock Ridge would make
Detrimental for us to put somebody else up, yeah.
Yep. So just an FYI.
So we don't need to have someone on there, because we have Noel, is what you're saying, correct?
Well, no, I was, I brought that up because I didn't want to say what she said. Because they, they kind of, in, they
They want representation for
They want representation. And have, Rock Ridge having the superintendent and a board member on there may not look.
And we had a board member on there at the time, or what, would you say, I'm sorry?
I said having the superintendent and a board member.
What is the time commitment for that, for Rams?
Oh, meeting once a month, and then there's a couple other events that take place during the school year.
Nicole, would you be interested?
Um, well, I think we have representation, so if we didn't, maybe I would, but I feel comfortable not.
I think it's great that Noel's on the board, we have representation. But I do think, like myself, I, I think it would have been interesting to be on that board and have a different perspective and, you know, kind of different, different area, different people at the table. And it would have been interesting to do, but it's an interview process, other people from other school districts will apply. And it doesn't even have to be a school district, I believe, like city
Community councils.
Yeah, city councils and things like that, so all different people are applying, you go in and interview and
In the meeting.
I think I would be interested.
Yeah.
I think I
Here we go, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second, I'll third.
There you have it.
Yep.
Here we go. Be filibustered long enough to get somebody into it.
And they'll give you information on what you need to do and, and that kind of thing too.
We got a motion by Tim to put Jennifer Bonner on the ticket. At least already did, at least this second.
I thirded it.
You're on the ballot.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you Jennifer, that was great.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, good luck.
Yep.
6.4, consider approval of the amended memorandum of understanding between Rock Ridge Public Schools and the Virginia Public, or Police Department.
I make a motion.
Now this was just a, this was just a couple of wording things, I think, on their, on their end for their reunion, so.
Support.
Motion by Westby, support by Lotteger, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. 6.5, consider the proxy statement for the Minnesota School Board Association Insurance Trust.
I'll make, go ahead.
Motion by Lotteger, support, support by Rudden, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Consider approval of 2025 MSBA Delegate Assembly Propose Legislative Resolution, District Authority of Eligibility for Supplemental Online Courses.
I will make a motion.
Motion by Colbert Dahl.
Second.
Second by Bonner, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. 6.7, consider approval of, oh, that's different, it's a different, consider approval of 2025 MSBA Delegate Assembly Propose Legislative Resolution, Reform Minnesota's Post-Secondary Enrollment Options Statutes. I will make that motion.
Support.
Support by Lotteger, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. 6.8, consider approval of the 2025 MSBA Delegate Assembly Proposed Legislative Resolution, PSEO Enrollment Requirements. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Colbert Dahl, support by Yohan, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. 6.9, consider approval of 2025 MSBA Delegate Assembly Proposed Legislative Resolution, District Authority for Post-Secondary Enrollment Options.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Westby.
Support.
Support by Colbert Dahl, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Just so everybody understand, that these resolutions were put in by other districts. We're co, we're like co-signing it.
Yeah.
So was Heving, Grant, well, it, it, they haven't passed it at their boards, but Heving, Grand Rapids, Aiken, Hermantown, of course, was one of the ones that did it. Reamer, Deer River, Ely, Mountain Iron Buell, they're, they're all looking at this, because this is a big
Detriment to our
To everyone that, in the rural areas, so.
Thank you, Tim.
Things have to change.
Yeah. Meeting announcements, 7.1, the next regular meeting will be Monday, October 27th, 6 o'clock at the Rock Ridge Admin Building. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Rudden, support by Lotteger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.